So this is special meeting called by four members of the commission. For Monday, November 13, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Council Chamber of the Municipal Building, 315 West Second Street. The purpose of this meeting is to allow for discussion and public input of issues related to management and operation of the Frankfurt Plant Board, which may include discussion of qualifications, removal, or related action for one or more Frankfurt Plant Board members. Actually, they'll be taken and signed by four members of the commission. For the record, I was in favor of this meeting at 6:00 PM tonight, but because four members wanted to call it, they certainly met the statutory requirements to do that. I'll go down the list of folks that have signed in first. Do we have any groups that signed up that would like to speak on behalf of an organization? That group would get up to 30 minutes.
Mayor.
We were told you didn't have to sign up.
Mayor.
We were told we did not have to sign up to speak for a group.
Okay. I'm asking, so is there someone that wants to speak for a group?
Mayor, I would just like to know if we could get an idea of how many groups are going to speak?
That's what I was trying to do. Exactly, that's what I was trying to do, find out how many folks.
May I have the floor, sir? Thank you. I would just suggest, you know, that we narrow the 30 minutes to 15 for the large groups, and then if they need extensions, we can allow them two, five-minute extensions, and that way we can proceed perhaps more expeditiously. I'm just throwing that out.
It's okay. City Attorney Laura Ross wants to discuss.
We have an order of procedure that does state that groups have up to 30 minutes, and there's nothing that speaks specifically in our order of procedure to how we might limit that, except that if it isn't addressed in our procedures, we refer to Robert's Rules of Order. We can do this. Robert's Rules of Order requires a two-thirds vote, which would be 3.33 commissioners or four, to limit it to the amount of time that you all would like. So you may do that.
So that means if one of us is not sure, we can just speak in third?
I make the motion that we limit the large group session to 15 minutes with two additional five-minute extensions per group.
I'm going to interpret that you're saying to limit debate? Is that the motion you want to do?
No. I would like for each group to limit their presentation to 15 minutes, if they can possibly. And then, if they feel like they need to speak longer, they can ask for an additional five minutes, and then one extra additional five-minute period. That would get them, I believe, close to 30 minutes.
I'm trying to, if you listen, I'm trying to help you.
Okay.
Not to rule you out of order. It's like, was your motion to limit debate to 15?
Well, Mayor, I'll say what, I'll just rely on your expertise. You're the parliamentarian.
Oh, I'm asking.
Okay, you're the parliamentarian.
I think he's saying limit the presentation.
The motion would...
Say it, help me, Laura.
Honestly, I don't know if my Robert's Rules for Dummies goes into that much detail. I would've said suspend the rules to limit the amount of presentation time, but if there's a correct way to say it, we definitely should look into that.
Well, I'll take instruction.
I think it's sufficient to ask that we limit that amount of time to 15 minutes.
I make the motion that we limit the amount of time to 15 minutes for large groups, as pre-indicated in the special call.
Motion by Commissioner Tippett.
Second.
If I push rocks to discussion.
Yeah, I still have a question. I guess it's hard to do in this venue, but I would like to know if there's any group out there that 15 minutes would not be sufficient. Okay, I see no one, so it looks like everybody thinks that 15 minutes would be sufficient. So I'll call for the question.
Clerk, please come on.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes. Okay, do we have any groups that have not signed up or that would like to speak? And if by doing so, if you're part of a group, that means the group itself gets 15 minutes. Individuals do not get the opportunity to take the five minutes. So if you have groups of six or more, this means 15 minutes is the amount of time that you will have, and any of those members of that group do not get to come up individually in addition to that. So it's going to be difficult to determine who's part of a group and who's not.
When they stand up to do their groups, they might identify the people of their groups.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mayor May, I am in a part of the group, I'd like to represent the Frankfurt Plant Board staff.
Okay.
I'd like to speak, I think I can keep it within the 15.
Okay, that'll be fine.
You guys, quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
Never has in the past, but I just want to double-check. I assume we still have the ability to ask questions, even if it goes past their 15 minutes?
Absolutely.
Just want to double-check. Thank you.
And our questions don't count as part of their 15 minutes.
Correct. Let's proceed. First, I have Ms. Kathy. So do you want to sign you up?
Yes, sir. I did not see a sign sheet. It was citizen comments only, so I just want to make sure we got on the list for groups.
Do you want to say? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead with, is this the first page? Okay, so I'm gonna go down on page one, which had Ms. Kathy Warren.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you are first.
I have to do groups.
Okay, sure. If y'all don't mind, you don't have to give your address, just state your name.
I'm glad to.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I asked another question. I thought, I may have got this wrong, I thought we were doing groups first and then individuals, but is it just mixed? I think you would infer that from the special agenda, or the agenda, but I'm not sure. If you look under number two in the bullets, I don't know if they're in sequence or not.
It says we're doing groups first.
Okay. We can do groups first, since that's what's on the agenda, because the agenda...
Thank you very much.
We have to follow the, I'm sorry, Ms. Warren, because it's, and because it's a...
I'll...
It's okay. Because it is a special commission meeting, we have to be very strict with how the agenda reads. So then, I apologize, we'll come back. This is page one, so if you signed up on that, we'll have to come back because of the way the agenda is worded. So I'm waiting. You know what, because Mr. Denton was up here first, I'm gonna, is that okay?
I think that's...
Because he was here, even though you didn't sign in, and we know you're going to, since you stated that, I will let you go first. And then, we'll go in the order of the sign-in. And Mr. Denton, our city attorney will give you the one-minute warning.
Excellent. I appreciate that. I might put my phone here, too, just to make sure.
Now, keep in mind, too, though, for asking questions, that's not going to count as your time, so you could go longer because of how long it takes to answer questions. Okay. And again, don't have to give addresses, just state your name.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is David Denton. I've been serving as the Finance Director, which is the Chief Financial Officer for the Frankfurt Plant Board for the last five years and five months. I'm licensed with the state of Kentucky as a Certified Public Accountant, CPA, with over 14 years of experience in public accounting and finance. As you may all know, effective November 1st of this month, I was appointed by the FPB Board of Directors as the Interim Acting General Manager of the Frankfurt Plant Board after retirement of our prior General Manager, Harvey Bannister. And I'm here tonight to represent the staff members of the Frankfurt Plant Board. The Frankfurt Plant Board operates under Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter 96, Sections 171 through 188, which lays out a general framework for how FPB is governed. Our Board of Directors are appointed by the Mayor of the City of Frankfurt, must be confirmed by a majority vote of the City Commission. The statute we operate under also provides a mechanism for the City Commission to remove FPB Board members. When I learned that the Frankfurt City Commission called this meeting to discuss the composition of FPB Board of Directors, with multiple City Commissioners stating their request to hear from FPB staff members, I naturally was concerned about this process, as it applied to me personally and also to other members of my team. My team and I work for the FPB Board of Directors, as they control all conditions of employment for the Frankfurt Plant Board, and we serve them well. As this commission is asking my team and myself to publicly discuss our superiors, our governing body, when I consider the fact that this commission has the authority to approve a mayor's appointment of a board member, and also the authority to remove our board, and considering the fact that I'm now acting as the General Manager, representing all FPB team members, staff members, I feel obligated to comply with the wishes of the commission to make a statement from the FPB's staff point of view, and that's why I'm here tonight. As the General Manager of the Plant Board, I report directly to the FPB Board of Directors and manage the day-to-day operations of this nonprofit municipal corporation. I have an excellent team of educated, highly-trained, experienced, professionally credentialed staff that also do their job from the perspective of an FPB customer as well, because most of us are FPB customers and members of this community. We work, live, play, and pray right here, so for FPB staff members, my teammates, this is, it's not just a job, it also is a mission filled with purpose, because our customers are our family, our friends, and this is our home. The decisions we make as FPB staff members directly affect our families and circle of influence. When the Plant Board increases rates on services that we provide, our bills as staff members go up also. So we take our positions very seriously. This is our livelihood. For most of us, this is our sole source of income. My personal story is a perfect example of this, and my story is replicated over and over within our company. You see, I moved here in Frankfurt in 2004 to marry my wife, Lori. She was a graduate of Western Hills High School. She serves as the Elementary School Counselor for the Frankter Independent School, Second Street School. She's currently in her 12th year at Second Street. I have a daughter and a son that have attended Second Street Schools since they were both three months old, through the Second Street Schools daycare and preschool, which we were really benefited from, and I was very grateful for that. On days when I need to pick them up from school, I almost have to push them out the door, drag them out the door, because they want to be there. It feels like home for them, and I have to admit, hanging out with their mother in their office after school as a staff's kid is pretty cool as well. But many families like mine have been financially supported by the Plant Board over the years. I know I speak for all current and past FPB employees when I say thank you to this community, and thank you to our customer owners who have provided that to us. We are forever grateful. I ask the commission to appreciate the position I am in and other FPB members could be in by speaking to you on this matter, and ask that you keep this fact in mind as you conduct the meeting. I personally attended and participated in 78 FPB Board meetings as the Finance Director of the Plant Board, and covered hundreds of agenda items during those 78 meetings, presented financial reports, analysis, budget reports, have been over five clean unqualified audit reports prepared by our independent CPA firms as required by statute. We've had multiple municipal bond financings for large projects, and have dealt in all other things financial at the Frankfurt Plant Board. There is a large body of work, products produced by FPB staff, that has been presented in public meetings, in public documents, and videotaped board meeting discussions that replay on our local Channel 10 regularly, and also on-on-demand for cable subscribers of FPB, and they're also available on YouTube for those that want to go out that aren't FPB cable subscribers. Of course, we'd love to have you subscriber, but you can actually go out on YouTube and see those meetings anytime you want. This commission and community doesn't have to look far to discover the issues facing the Plant Board at any given time, with clear communicated recommendations from the FPB staff on each topic that can be traced to the final action items taken by our board in the form of a vote on the item being considered. I'm here tonight to represent the staff members of the Frankfurt Plant Board, my team. It's important for everyone involved in this meeting tonight to understand the role that FPB staff members have in our organization, and what we control and what we cannot control. Our purpose is to carry out the day-to-day operations of the Frankfurt Plant Board of our Electric, Water, Telecommunications Division, and to provide our Board of Directors with timely, accurate information on all matters facing our organization. And we do this guided by our experience, training, education, in order to help our board be fully informed on the decisions they make to govern our utility, and ultimately set our strategic direction. It's important to understand that FPB staff members give our board all the information and guidance on any issue. That is where our responsibility ends. I think it's important, as we move forward and talk about this tonight, understanding the roles that all of us play in this process. FPB staff members, once we give our information, based on our education and experience, at the time that we've delivered everything and the board feels they have enough information, that's truly where our responsibility ends. FPB staff members do not have a vote on FPB Board of Directors. In my five years and five months as a staff member, I've worked with multiple boards and have not agreed on every action taken by our board, and that is absolutely fine. You know, there has been, there have been and will be issues that arise in our operations and management of the Plant Board, where staff members have differing professional opinions from the majority of the board, and we expectly, respectfully agree to disagree on those topics. There are many things FPB staff, team members can control, there are a lot that we can't control, but what we can control is the manner that we operate the day-to-day operations of the company that we love, and how we present and prepare our professional opinions guided by experience to help our board make informed decisions. We have been doing this day after day, year after year, and we will continue to serve our board, no matter who is on it. That's very important. I would like to take a moment to address my FPB team members, many of which are here tonight on their own self-will. I understand them being here tonight, because what we're discussing directly affects them. So I'd really like to take a minute and thank my FPB teammates. We, the job that they do day in and day out, just really can't explain what it takes to run a utility in an efficient manner. They put their lives at risk. You know, our best hope is they return home safe every night, but the way they conduct themselves, and with the professionalism, and with the amount of, really teamwork that we have in making this utility operate, I really appreciate them very much, and they can hold their head high as they walk out of here tonight and going forward, and the job that they do. You know, I think FPB is an absolute jewel in this community. To be able to have local control of your Electric, Water, and Telecommunications is absolutely, it's just, it's really, I think we take it for granted. You don't have to look very far to see companies, or I should say cities, that have utility companies or telecommunications companies, so that they can't actually put a lot of control over. So this is a jewel in this community, and I really want to thank my staff members as we walk forward. I really appreciate that very much. When I talk about the roles that we all play, I'd like just briefly, this is to talk about the direction of the Frankfurt Plant Board. You can see, I put my comments aside, and I'm just gonna talk straight up on things that we do all the time. This is covered in our budget meetings, it's covered in every board meeting, to some extent. Let's talk about the direction of the Frankfurt Plant Board. We have major items affecting each of our, each of our three divisions, Electric, Water, and Telecommunications. Things that we've talked about in our budget meetings, kind of give you a little looking forward what things look like. As you all know, we have been discussing how we are going to move forward with our wholesale power supply, our board are a member of the Kentucky KYMEA, and what we have seen and what we believe to be true is that when we walk down this path with KYMEA, that starting in May of 2019, we think that we'll have approximately $7 to $9 million in savings on our wholesale power, year after year. See, today, we have rates set to cover our operating expenses, to cover all of our infrastructure projects, to cover our debt service, and to make sure that we have a strong cash position. That cash position is important to make sure we have a healthy bond rating to lower our cost of capital, and also to make sure that we, in the event that we have an incident, you can imagine a weather event, you're gonna go through a lot of cash quickly. It's important to have those cash reserves on hand. So today, those rates are set to cover all of those things. Look at May 1st of 2019, we get that first bill from KYMEA. Month after month, that energy that we pay for is going to be significantly cheaper than what we're paying today. And you get to the end of 12 months, you think about what that looks like. Theoretically, we think this is true, at the end of 12 months, you're gonna have $7 to $9 million in savings. What we would like to do with that money, and what, of course, at the end of the day, is for the board to decide what, how they want to proceed, but our recommendations have been to look at investing in a smart meter, AMI, infrastructure project. That project is estimated to cost $9 million. It's gotten cheaper year over year, but with the savings from KYMEA, you could pay for that in cash in two years. And that brings a lot of operational efficiencies to the Plant Board, and it also brings a lot of benefits to our customers. You know, I know there's a lot of us that, you know, go week to week trying to make ends meet, and you could think about building with AMI to have prepaid metering. Whenever you have a cash available, you can make a payment down to your prepaid account. You know exactly what you have day after day, and that's a huge benefit to our customers. And that's just one I'd throw out as an example. But at some point, after we pay for cash, pay AMI in cash, if the board so chooses to do that, we're gonna have those savings continue. At some point, we're gonna have a large cash reserve, and the automatic question is, you know, I think we need to give some of this money back to our ratepayers. There is a method, or a language within our bond covenants that require, if you do lower rates, there needs to be a review to make sure you're doing it right. And that's fine, we'll walk through that review, and it will show that we have the ability to give money back. But think about where we get down the road, three, four, five, six years down the road, and we continue to have these savings, or are able to give the money back to our customer owners, if that's the board's decision. You can imagine, year after year, we continue to have electric rates that are extremely attractive compared to those systems around us. All of a sudden, we start to look like a very, very bright light in central Kentucky for businesses to relocate, for those men and women that drive in from different parts of the state to work here at state government, they might decide, hey, I'm just gonna stay and live here in Frankfurt. I've heard that economic development, energy planning is one of the bigger decision-makers for a company to come, and the plan that we have in place, and as the board moves forward, if that were to be realized, it's, it looks pretty good. Financially strong, investing in infrastructure, that puts us in the next generation, benefits to our customers, that's a good thing. When you look at the water reservoir with our water division, you know, I know with the discussions with Tanglewood and with the reservoir, it's a very sensitive topic, and I understand the concerns, and I understand the issues with Tanglewood residents, I really do. And in my role as your General Manager, I really will work to try to move the process forward the best way we can to make everybody happy. But at the end of the day, all staff has done when it comes to the reservoir is see the problem, 130-year-old reservoir, that is actually, it is a safety issue, it needs to be replaced, it's outlasted its useful life. It has to be done. So we, appreciating Tanglewood's position, also have 16,000 customers that we have to think about the rate impacts to them of this project. So all staff has done is looked at the issue...
One minute.
...considered where we are, and how we can best solve the problem that will have minimal impact to our ratepayers. Telecommunications division, there's no doubt, no question that we have, the industry is rapidly changing, and we recognize that, and it's a competitive industry as well. So we have plans, looking forward, to try to make our system a next-generation telecommunications system. I can tell right now, I'm not gonna hit my 15, so I don't know how an extension works.
Well, you may want us to ask you some questions.
Okay. We have a plan, and our job is to work with our board, and at the end of the day, they execute their plan with their vote. I just wanted to speak tonight on behalf of the staff to make it clear as to what our roles are, to tell you that you've got a great competent team, and that we are fully capable and ready to move this plant forward, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Denton. Let me also say, too, having been out when we've had emergencies and seeing our crews working together, they do a tremendous job in often cold, wet, rainy, dangerous, very hot, and they're out there, I mean, with leaning poles that could break and crash down. It's extremely, extremely dangerous, and we just want to say to everybody, please be patient when your power goes out, because it takes a while to get people out there, and people are putting their lives at risk to get that back on, so we appreciate all that. Commissioner Tippett, you have a question?
A statement first and a question. I believe in the past, the Frankfurt Plant Board made remittances to the local school district with their reserves. Is that not the case? And could that continue once again?
For, when I get, there is, there are very few questions that have simple answers, and there's usually a context that needs to be formed, and then the problem needs to be laid out, and then how and why we're doing what we do today. So I'll just lay that out on the start, that there might, there may be some questions come up that we're just not gonna be able to get into in detail, that we're gonna ask, if the board would submit questions to us, we can answer, but I'll do the best I can on the fly here to answer these questions.
Thank you. But the question, that was literally a statement. Have you, or any of your staff members, subordinates, been subjected to directives by city board members to not speak on any specific subjects, or what I simply call a gag order? Has it happened to you? Has it happened to any of your subordinates, where specific city board members on the Frankfurt Plant Board asked you or directed you not to speak to anyone else?
I think it's been reported very well in the State Journal about a couple of recent public meetings that were, that occurred. I have not been asked to not speak at anything. I informed Annamarie Rosen, my chairperson, of me coming to this meeting tonight, and my intent to give a statement to the commission as a representative of staff. It's been, you know, I will answer questions that are out there in the public and people have seen. So I think there was concern at the board level of staff engaging in conversations, meetings with KCDC and also the chamber, in discussing topics related to KYMEA, as well as fiber to the home. But I do think we've had, I think Mrs. Rosen and Walt Baldwin, our vice chair, were at least one of those meetings, so I think, you know, they represented the Plant Board in that matter. So I personally have not been asked to not speak on anything.
Are you aware of any of your subordinates being asked not to speak directly?
In that KCDC and that chamber, that incidence is what I'm speaking of. They were, they said it was best for them, I believe Ms. Rosen, being the new chair, just thinking how to present at those meetings. So I'm going to, you know, I'm walking through a minefield.
I understand that.
So, and that was part of my statements, that you would respect the position I'm in. You know, my job is to go back tomorrow, we have a board meeting, I'm gonna sit across from my board members tomorrow at 1:00 PM, and I don't want to do anything tonight that would inhibit or hinder my ability to be effective General Manager of the Plant Board.
And I understand that completely.
Right.
But what I would say to you as a city, the city commissioner, I need the information, and I would not take account of anybody directing any of the staff not to speak with me personally.
I understand that.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna ask you anyway, okay? So that's my job, is to find, you know, to find information out and try to make a judgment based on the information that's given to me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, could I just ask, if at some point later in the meeting, could we call people back to ask questions if we need to?
You may.
So can you hang around for a little while?
I can't. I think you're gonna find, because of the position we're in, my inability to lead the Plant Board in an effective way does not help the Plant Board any. So this is not a legal hearing, I'm not on testimony, and I'd ask that you just respect and consider the fact I've got two children at home...
Yes.
...that I need to take care of.
Oh, of course. I'm just, yeah.
I will be hanging around all night.
Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Commissioner Roach. I should say one thing, too. I'm not gonna allow for any cross-examination of Mr. Dent or any other speakers, so I'm gonna let commissioners ask two questions. If they're pointed, I'm gonna rule you out of order if I think you're being too pointed towards someone who's making a presentation. Let's not try to squelch, but let's try to, as our previous meetings, they're not here to be cross-examined, so I'd ask that we be respectful of that.
I will. Why are we limiting it to two? Where'd that come from?
That's something, as you recall, when we had our previous attorney, we would not do two, more than two, because you're getting, it'd be cross-examination, and since they're not...
We didn't follow that when we did the debate over the special class. You know, early in our tenure, when we had all the people like we have here tonight, are the difference, we didn't follow it on that at all.
I think we did.
Well, anyway, so you're, maybe I can ask multiple things within a question.
Sure.
All right.
But also... But also, Mr. Denton's not obligated, if it's something he, or anybody's not obligated to answer those questions, I hope that they will and be able to feel comfortable doing it, but if not, we have to understand that.
We're often hear that the, we don't know anything about what it's going to cost for the power under KEMEA. In other words, we don't have an exact number on cost outside of the power cost. So I guess my question is, to what degree are the power costs almost all of the cost? And aren't the other costs, to a great extent, reserve-type costs that we're just using our own money?
Yes, the rates that we pay KYMEA, which they've always told us that we will not have the rates until 2018, so we're not 2018 yet, we don't have the rates, but we knew that was the case. The, just like we do today with Kentucky Utilities, that, the rates that we give are going to be primarily power cost-related rates. Now, there will need to be revenue generated to cover the operating expenses of the organization, which, considering, you know, that's a small point, a small part, most of it will go to procurement and purchasing of power.
Okay. I guess my second and last question is, how does the power contract provide flexibility, mitigate risk, lower the carbon footprint? And that'll be enough.
I know the primary, the primary goal of Kentucky, of KYMEA, was to provide low-cost power to its members. Frankfurt is approximately 50% of the load of all of the municipal, of the members of the organization. So the idea too was also to establish a power supply that would allow a consistent, lower cost than we have today, to all of our members, under a variety of market conditions and fuel prices. So, in order to, you know, you need to have stable power to operate as an organization, to know you can't have massive changes in power costs month to month. You know, we have to set rates for our customer owners to pay, and it's very difficult whenever you have wild swings. Also, to our customers, we owe it to them to have reasonable, consistent, known rates. You can imagine to our large industrial customers, it's extremely important for them to be able to plan and know what the future looks like, and for those prospective companies coming to Frankfurt to know what the future of FPB power and the price looks like. So the intent was to have a stable power that is cheaper than we have today, under a variety of market conditions and fuel prices, and I think that's what this, what that accomplishes. We get very technical in the weeds very quick, so I would like for the commission, anything really technical when it comes to KYMEA or any other issue, if you would allow us to provide a written answer on some of those.
I've used my quote, so.
Any other commissioners who need to ask? Mr. Dent, thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here, and on behalf of your employees. We do have two more groups. Next, we have Ms. Terry Bradshaw, representing Kentucky Capital Development Corporation.
So, I will be really quick. I've sent you all a summary of what happened in the KCDC board meeting, some of you were there, some of you were not able to attend, so I wanted to be sure that we represented what had happened when we had that conversation with my board and some of the folks here in this room, that I believe will probably speak to you on behalf of their manufacturing facilities later. Honestly, I couldn't see everybody from where I was sitting, so I don't know how many of those folks are in the room or not. I just want to go back to some of the things that David said previously. It is impossible for me to be successful in economic development in a community where I don't have a partnership with the local utilities. And I can assure you that we have an excellent partnership. Herbie, before David and I worked together, literally from the day I got here, Vent and I still work together pretty much on a, on a regular basis, and John, of course, and I worked together on a lot of issues as well. So they have been very knowledgeable, very understanding of the needs of the manufacturers in the community, and I think as you hear some of the manufacturers represent their facilities, they will tell you the same thing. As I said, we wouldn't be successful if we didn't have that partnership with the utilities, and we would not be successful if we did not have the low cost of utilities that we have. And I assure you, we are very successful. In 2015, we were named the number one micropolitan in the state of Kentucky, and the number four in the country for job creation and investment within our community. At that time, we created 196 jobs, and we had a $21 million investment. In 2016, we were ranked number four in Kentucky. We had 45 new jobs and $31 million of investment. And this year thus far, we have 237 new jobs and $185 million of investment. So you see, we know what we're doing, and I was, I just spoke to the Frankfurt Plant Board a few weeks ago, and John Cubine, a board member at the time, asked me what they needed to do to be sure that we remain successful, and my answer to him was, keep doing what you're doing, you're doing an excellent job. So that being said, I wanted to remind you, we've had consultants and Cabinet for Economic Development that we've been in contact with through this entire process, they are our partners in recruitment of other, of new businesses. We, we would be remiss if we, if we didn't stay in touch with them and explain to them the entire process of what's going on here. They have to report that to their prospects, I would never put our partners in a situation where they were misinformed or uninformed. So as we've done that, they've made it clear that we will not, they cannot refer prospects to us until we get this issue resolved. But I have had the opportunity, since I sent you the information from our board meeting, to talk to some more manufacturers, I've heard from several of them, the mayor's gotten some of these letters as well, or maybe all of them, I'm not sure, and I don't know if he's shared them with you, if he has, I apologize for the redundancy. But I don't want to not, not say, you know, I don't want to leave somebody out. So, before I, before I tell you some of their comments, I want to be sure that you understand clearly the investment that these manufacturers make in this community and in their facilities to be sure that they are environmentally friendly and they are energy-wise. 54% of the plant, of the electricity that is sold by Frankfurt Plant Board is to industry. Most of those folks are ISO 1401 certified, which means that they meet international standards for effective environmental management, they have special recycle, reuse, and reclaim initiatives, they have won numerous awards for sustainability, they remanufacture parts, they have retrofitted their facilities to make them the most energy-efficient possible, and to fill, and fulfill their work desires. They do this for two reasons. One is because they're excellent corporate citizens. These folks, if you, we just did a program, we're starting to feature some of the things that they do for the community, and one of the things that they are very conscientious of is sustainability. The other reason is because they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on their electric bill. And so they, when you, when you purchase electricity in that capacity, every little thing that you do, no matter how small, is a lot of money when you're on that scale. So they're very conscientious of the way that they use electricity and ways that they can save on their electricity. But when you consider that one of our manufacturers annually pays over a million dollars in electric bills, if you do some, if we do anything to cause our electric bills to double, from four and a half, five cents to 10 cents, we would still be low to middle of the road electric cost compared to the rest of the country. We would cost that individual company over a million dollars extra a year. And I can assure you, when we start to do that, they will look to other company, excuse me, other communities where they can get electric for four, five cents a kilowatt-hour. So, just to get to some of the statements that they made, one said, let's see, the one reason we are here is because of the low cost of power. If that rate is unsure, it won't take my company seconds until they decide to look somewhere else. That's a real threat here. I know other manufacturers are very concerned about what's going on, and I want to make that 100% clear. Another one stated, we are an industry leader, recognized for our efforts to improve the environment, reduce waste, and energy costs. The process of the FPB is utilizing, the process the FPB is utilizing to achieve this goal is very troubling. We must constantly monitor all activity regarding our energy provider and its cost impact. The cost of energy is a key measurable of our company and others like us. In this same conversation, he expressed a concern to me, but the vote was made in September and was voted down, then the next month, it was added to the agenda again, and that no, his concern is number one, that no decision by Frankfurt Plant Board will ever be consistently a decision, because they'll just keep trying to bring it up for another vote and get a different vote. And he was also concerned that they are the largest electric customer.
Ms. Bradshaw, I need to pause for a second. I got a note from my fire chief, that's, just so you know, I'm not texting, but it's like staff telling me that, that we probably have a fire code violation here, since I think our capacity is 100, it's 100 or 110?
110.
And we are, I just did a quick count, and I can, we're already over 100, so I'm going to ask our fire chief just to verify that for me. Oh, yeah, yeah, we hate to ask, but we, listen, we have an overflow room, we have an overflow room across the hall.
How it works?
Is the video on in there?
Is the video on?
No.
The video's not on?
No.
They can stand in the hallway.
I hate to do that, unfortunately, though, if I don't enforce our own rules and somebody else breaks it, they'll be in trouble. So I'm going to just pause for a second until I can get someone from the fire to come in and give me an actual.
Where is our fire department staff?
Tell them to stay, they're coming back. They can come back.
Has someone let by know that we need?
I told them to stay.
Okay.
I'll call them.
We have one more group, and then we have 14 individuals.
Wayne's coming in.
What have we done in situations in the past where we had overflow beyond 100% capacity?
We have no choice.
That's it, that's what we want.
We have to do it.
Wayne's coming in, he's just in the hallway.
I think we have 105, Mayor, how many do you think we have?
I had more than that, but I'm not.
I think we have 115 without. Wow.
Couple people left, someone let in the fire chief, give me a official.
We should have guessed.
She's going to travel.
Now I'm good, I got help. I turned it on, it's only that long, yes, I would never go without.
Hey, when you get to be my age, you worry about this stuff.
Isn't there coffee?
Probably.
Thirty over. Stop, have we threw it out 30 yet?
I think the commission, we could lessen the battery rate.
We can't, now we have to be here. You can leave if you want to, I'm not going to make you stay.
There's the overflow room, and then there's two long hallways, I think we've got people standing in the hallways now, as a matter of fact.
So we need to lessen this amount by 30 people?
We cannot exceed 100 if we do in violation of our.
So can we ask 30 people to please? Go elsewhere.
Yeah, and you can stand with the door open.
You're a good citizen, sir.
You can stand with that door open as well.
Just so you know, we have to comply with open meetings requirements and also our fire codes, so right now, we're sort of, we're just stopping to make sure that we don't violate anyone's rights to be at a public meeting, but also we want to be protected by not having to be. Just so you know too, we're also working to try to get our IT staff to set up our monitors in the other room, so that can help.
You can call me all the time, I'll tell you.
There goes a very good citizen. I did, I am parched. Thank you, sir. You're a gentleman in a skirt.
Wait, are we to the room?
Uh-uh. I just need to keep my lips dry.
For those of you that took part in our public meeting on whether or not we need a new city hall.
There you go.
Kind of made the case. Okay, so I'm to be in total, our staff saying we can't do audio in the other room. Usually this is the overflow room for us, right in there, so.
That's true.
We still have, too many.
You have the science speech, you're a speaker.
I come down here to stand in the hallway. This is a very short sentence out here, guys, I know I'm out of order, my name is Roxwell, by the way, this is a very important topic, maybe should we stand in the hallway or stand in an overflow room, I think maybe, you all consider, if possible, we're scheduling this meeting, let me get to a venue where everybody can be seen in here.
Yeah.
So now we're making every effort to remedy the problem, we only have limited space, and we can't increase the size of our building.
So we have to have a different thing here.
Mayor.
I think we should just.
We've got.
Trying to get advice from your boss right now.
I'm sorry to bother you.
That's okay.
If, if I may, and to tell you the truth, I don't have a preference, which is unusual for me. But, you know, when we had the debate several years ago on fairness, we had the same problem with overcapacity, and we did, if you remember, we scheduled one of them in a place which would accommodate this large of a number. I think, I think the commission's choices are fairly clear, if it's all right with the attorney, you either A, reschedule it so that there's a large enough venue, or B, people stand in the hall and you roll along. I think those are really the two options, unless there are others that y'all have already thought of, and that's it. We have a duty.
Can I speak? Thank you. I do think that the Board of Commissioners, under the open meetings law, is under a duty to make some effort to remedy the problem. And if we cannot do that tonight, for a reasonable accommodation of this, then the best, the best thing to do to comply with the law would be to find a venue that would hold a large crowds.
Mayor, there is an option C, although it might take a bit of time to put it in place. Normally, when we meet across the hall, people over here are watching it on that screen right back there. And we could handle it that way, but I don't know how long that would take to set up.
There's too many. There's still too many.
Well, we would be taking, the eight of us over there, and we would be taking enough people to sit around the perimeter of the room, and then it's good to come in to present.
I think it holds 40.
Option C. I'm not proposing that we do it, I'm just saying that's another option.
So, question.
There's too many in the halls.
So, what we would do if we decide to move the meeting to another venue, is recess this meeting and then call it back into order? This is already on the record.
It's a special meeting call for this specific location, so we're a little bit.
Commissioner Roach was quoted, and to what, something you just said, and to what we heard from David, and that is, nobody is sworn in here, so it's not technically testimony. And I'm wondering if we might not want to take testimony under oath? And can we do that? Can we hold a hearing? Because if this commission is going to make a decision that's this important, and it's very important, then I want to hear from people, and if people are afraid to speak, then, you know, we're left with making decisions. I've got information that's come through paper, through email copies, through telephone calls, and I've heard the word hearing, I've heard the word testimony, I've heard, don't want to speak, I'm not under oath. So I'm just putting that out there, if that's something we should consider for our attorney to advise us.
I just want to point out real quick, right now, we're violating our fire code. So Commissioner Haney, I want to let him say something real quick, and then we're going to have, you're going to have to either adjourn this meeting or reschedule.
Well, I just think at this particular junction, we need to reschedule, you know, end this one and reschedule, because I want to hear what the people have to say. And when we're going to run into a time crunch, we already got a cold in here, too. And I thought we've got more, we've got more people to warm up, and that didn't happen. So I just don't think we're going to get to that, because I was the one, I was out because of a medical problem at home, and there's a lot of stuff, I'm still reading and stuff, and a lot of stuff I wanted to hear, and it doesn't appear that either that's going to happen. So I would definitely rather do this at a venue where we can sit back and we, a lot, a lot more time.
Well, can I have my question answered from the attorney's place?
You may.
And so, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowers. So your question was regarding whether or not we can do this in a, in a hearing format? Is, is that correct?
That's my question.
Sure. That lends itself to a lot of other questions. I think, I think that, of course, but I think that it might be difficult to do that due to the nature of what we're doing here in a listening session. I don't think the law actually provides for a hearing setting for this type of discussion.
Well, my next question related to that is, when I read Commissioner Roach's comment in the paper, I think of, you know, if we're the judge and jury, technically, we're not supposed to hear things until a hearing. So Commissioner Roach, who are you, assuming would be the judge and jury, typically as the city commission?
Folks, my comfort level is way beyond what it needs to be. I mean, I just would say you adjourn this meeting.
You want to get out of here? Okay.
Only because we're standing here violating our, we cite you for this. And the fire chief is actually saying, yes, we need to stop it. And we don't want to ask people to leave, so we shouldn't ask.
Well, can I, so listen, Mrs. Lister, can you think about those questions?
Absolutely. I will get back to you all on that.
Can I move for adjournment?
Move by Commissioner Haney. Give her a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roach, all is in favor. I'm sorry. I'm just going to... Say hi. Close my side. Yeah.